The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We get a roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Uh, Mrs. Wallizer will not be attending this evening. Uh, so the first recognition this evening, uh, unfortunately is a obituary minute, but gives us an opportunity as a school district to recognize, uh, former staff in the school district that have committed them, themselves in the educational environment, uh, but have, uh, unfortunately passed away. And this is, uh, in reference to, uh, Mr. Terry Bucks, who was a teacher in the school district. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Brandywell Heights Area School District acknowledges the passing of a dear friend in education, Mr. Terry Bucks, on February ninth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three. Terry Bucks served the school district with dedication and excellence as a secondary English and reading teacher for a total of thirty-five years prior to his retirement in two thousand and one. Terry Bucks' committed commitment to lifelong learning, devotion to students, and the record of excellence in the educational and community endeavors will long be re- remembered and appreciated. And whereby his passing is marked by a deep sense of loss to his family and friends in the district. The Brandywell Heights Area School Board would like to publicly recognize the extraordinary life and record of service of Terry Bucks. Now, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the Brandywell Heights Area School District officially honor Mr. Terry Bucks for his role in improving the lives of countless students and citizens through his contributions to education, public service, his family and community. And for, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the school district this sixth day of March, two thousand twenty-two, with a copy sent to his brief family. If we can just have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Uh, the, the second recognition we, we, uh, would like to do tonight is something called the New Heights Award. We do this every month. Uh, it is an opportunity for us to recognize two staff members that go above and beyond. We, uh, receive New Heights Awards throughout the, uh, month. We usually receive a whole bunch of them and, uh, it gives us a great pleasure to be able to select two people that become essentially the employees of the month. And so, uh, this evening, we'd like to, uh, do those recognitions. Um, first up, I'd like to call, uh, Ms. Cindy Steele, if you don't mind coming up here.
So what we will do is, um, take a moment, I will read, uh, the recognition, uh, that you've received, Miss Steele. Cindy has done a phenomenal job, Sammy, for Mr. Salt, for Mr. Ben Salt for, for the last several weeks. She jumped right in and kept things going by setting high expectations as standards, developing relationships with students, and keeping them engaged in their musical and song-hold classes. She has taken time to learn some of the content in music theory, which has allowed her to assist with students with their work. She has come to the school every day with positive attitude, which I believe rubs off on both the students and faculty. She has been a wonderful addition to the music department and will be an honorary member from now on. Finally, it says, it has been a great pleasure to work with her and then grateful her time, efforts, and generosity. And, uh, Mr. Ginch has a few extra words to add.
Uh, sir, this is a quick story. One of the big challenges that we run into sometimes is some of the, the things that still happen in terms of staffing challenges. We have to get a little creative on a stage that they actually have to do. They'll lie on some folks that are going to listen to support. Well, Miss Steele has helped us out before as a subject, but we found an opportunity when Mr. Salt was leaving, uh, for an extended period of time that we needed someone to kind of step up. And, uh, Steele was more than willing to help us out and honestly put, put a lot of faith in our program because, uh, not a music teacher at heart, but it's one of those things where we knew we were going to have to rely on a lot of students that were there to sort of get through this time period. And she was wonderful with the students, uh, she was every day with a positive attitude. It's got to be challenging to have, uh, a discipline that's probably outside of the club that's your typical upper area. But every day was, did, did a phenomenal job and truly felt like a part of our staff for the time that she was working. So I can't thank her enough for the work that she did. Uh, it was awesome having her with us and, and really, um, what could have been a really, really challenging time, having a, a staff member who teaches a very special athletic position ended up being, um, a really positive experience for myself, hopefully for our students, uh, and hopefully for the students around us. So thank you.
Next up, we'd like to recognize, uh, this Nicole Smith. Do you want to go up? Do you want to read your paper? Okay, alright. Um, Nicole is one of our kindergarten teachers in the school district. I'll take a moment to read why she would recognize. Miss Smith joined us last year and has been a fantastic addition to the Brandywell Heights education staff as she has always a smiling, happy face in the hallways at the elementary school. Nicole brings with her a lot of experience and perspective from the urban school district. This Smith, Mrs. Smith is always thinking of ways to create application, application opportunities for students. It all comes in there. She repeats tables with names with sight words, adds in other shapes into groupings and activities to ensure that students are always learned even while they're transitioning to activities. Recently, while teaching money, Mrs. Smith's students earn coins throughout the week to make purchases at Mrs. Smith's bookstore at the end of the week. Students not only need to know the value of points, they need to count the total value of the coins earned, determine if they had enough money to make purchases, subtract points to make a purchase, and learn about financial transactions all while in kindergarten. Students were highly engaged in the entire process and it made learning about money fun and exciting while teaching essential skills for students.
So that was a lot of what I wanted to say. But I do have, just, we are really lucky to have Nicole on our staff. Uh, she's an excellent team player. She brings human creative ideas into her teaching and shares them with the team. During one of our, uh, recent Tech Tuesdays, uh, we had our, uh, technology teacher visit her classroom to get the ideas for her emoji, for her emoji board, that we call it virtual classroom, where she has it set up, uh, very easily for her students to see visually parts of their daily routines in a fun, creative way and then potentially talk with other teachers in the chat. She's pleasant, friendly, easygoing, super hardworking. Um, her classroom is very caring and loving. Every time I go in there, the students are coming up to me, hugging me and sharing what they've learned from her. So showing that she also recognizes their hardworking efforts, um, in the class. So, thank you, Nicole, for everything. You're awesome.
The, uh, final, uh, recognition this evening, uh, is to recognize two of our students that have come a long way from Crete, a massive milestone in their athletic career. So I'm going to invite Sarah up to do official recognition.
Can I stand over there?
Absolutely. I was going to say, how do we want to do this?
Jacob makes me stand. Uh, everybody, we are recognizing Jacob Deisher and, uh, our national master for their accomplishments and their wrestling. Uh, well, students, uh, reached one hundred wins this season, which is a huge accomplishment in itself. Uh, additionally, they had a COVID year in there, which also much turned out to be some very good students. So it did put a test that needs to accomplish. Additionally, they're just, they're phenomenal student athletes. They work hard, um, in the community. They work hard for the wrestling organization. They, uh, referees for their Friday matches, um, have helped the program show tremendous work ethic. That is something that I'm proud of. Um, I've only been fortunate enough to work with them the last few years. So I also, if I didn't coach them early, this is people that we have, to give you a better picture of all their performance.
So my first friend, if you'd like to change, when you were in the athletic program, I went to a lot of tournaments and saw a lot of them. He was a wonderful middle school coach and we had to work with his work with state. I got to see a lot of these guys as we grew up. And I've been fortunate enough over the last two years, uh, to get to coach them. Um, a few years back, I had the opportunity to coach with a guy, Tom Hutchinson, who, when he brought up love and wrestling and he made a speech about love, I was like, you're not supposed to be talking about wrestling, bro. It's tough, we don't care. But the more you think about it, it's very true. Um, you have to love this sport if no two kids love this sport more than these two right here. Whether they always know it all the time is another question. Um, it's easy to love it when it's going well, everything's going your way. It's always really fun and exciting when teams are having success and you're having individual success. But at times, mid to late February, early March, when you're getting up in the morning after practice, and you're every day wrestling every Saturday, stuck in a gym for sixteen, nine hour, nine hours getting home, warm when it's dark, waking up when it's dark. That gets tough, especially in the winter, you know, your body aches. You've been getting tossed around in different directions all season long. It gets tough if you don't do that and you might be miserable going to that practice. So the only thing that's pushing you to do that is your love for the sport. You've got to show that all year, every day, for the last two seasons. Um, I know we both have incredible family support system, um, both mom and dad. Both of them incredibly supportive, love and beyond, number one program, our kids as well. Not only do these guys have those tournaments, parents, too. That definitely helps them, uh, being able to go home with a great support system and, um. Josh, I'll start with you. Uh, your style of wrestling has aged me significantly these last two seasons. Uh, in a good way, because you are the most, and one of the most entertaining kids to watch wrestling. Um, I said before, um, you're, you're down fourteen points and in a horrible position. And you went up hitting that kid and the kid gets a little bit anxious now. Um, yeah, again, very exciting. Style, we got sometimes, but it was what you did. It was you. You wrestled and you had fun doing it. It worked for you to have fun doing it for the first time. You actually taught me some things about, maybe I need to back off on being so rigid on technique and stuff like that. And I have one question, because not everybody's the same. Everybody has their own. Jake, um, your leadership in the room and in the program, uh, is, is second. It was like, I can only relate to like a player coach. Uh, when, uh, we, maybe, didn't always have a vibe, like Waylon, Coach Waylon, the head coach, uh, had some issues, personal issues this year, or maybe because he hasn't practiced his own time and things like that. And Coach Holly would be in there and we, we would have Jake actually run the more of us, run the drills, um, and really take a leadership role. And it was never a problem because every single team on that, every single kid on that team looked up and they're so that Jake's extra for his work ethic and his accomplishments. So it was like having a third coach in the room. Something that these guys are going to take with them, especially with this year. They got their, they grabbed a hundred wins between the two of them. Uh, they have, I believe, two hundred seventeen wins. Uh, and that's huge. That's, that's awesome for me to be a coach athlete like them and made my job easy when I was still involved in that. They literally had to hit almost every single opponent we wrestled in a team duel. For our team to have a chance to win, and I would say probably ninety-five percent of the time. That was the only reason that Brandywell Wrestling was able to win their first championship. But was that, that being said, it is a cheaper holes. Uh, obviously Josh with the torn meniscus. He tore his meniscus in his hundredth win at the start of the third period. He had to wrestle a full period with a torn meniscus where he could barely stand to achieve that hundred. So I can't imagine the pain was in, but he gunned it out and showed the mental toughness to get through it. Jake, a couple, uh, moments in matches didn't go our way. Being placed one spot short of, uh, making the state tournament this year. So what will they take away from those experiences? I think, and from personal experience within this sport, when you don't achieve your goals, it pushes you and motivates you to achieve every goal you set out to achieve from that point on, because you don't want to feel like you're failing the belt when you achieve this goal. So I have no doubt in my mind that both of these young men will be successful at whatever they choose to do in life. And, uh, it's just the personality they have. They will constantly keep pushing forward, running out, uh, whatever they need to be successful at their next step as well. Um, that being said, I'm honored to coach them. It's a privilege to be able to talk about them. And, uh, thank you guys both for allowing me to do that.
All right, student board representatives. Oh, uh, do you want to mention the? So, uh, thank you to everyone in the audience for, uh, celebrating those accomplishments with us. To our New Heights Awards winners, congratulations to our two athletes, congratulations. Huge, uh, win and this, Mr., uh, Whirly, thank you so much for your comments this evening. Uh, one final recognition, we have the, uh, Frontline Impact Project. Uh, Ms. Kelly, our elementary principal, wrote a, uh, grant. Uh, we honestly didn't think we were going to get it, but we received forty pallets of Lysol wipes. So, uh, a pretty awesome, uh, opportunity for us. Uh, we have been trying to get, we, we have distributed those out to all of the classrooms. Uh, we also have them in, uh, strategic locations in each office areas for any community members to come in, uh, to receive those, uh, donations of the wipes. Uh, and we're also going to put them out at, uh, events, community events throughout the rest of the spring, concerts, open houses, those sort of things for, uh, the community to be able to, uh, to take those and use those. Uh, we also had a chance to, uh, partner with our library as well as our, uh, the Topton Food Pantry and have, uh, been able to, uh, support those two agencies with some of the white donations as well to get those out into a different sect of the community. So huge thank you to the frontline, uh, Frontline Impact Project, uh, great, great opportunity for our community. So I just wanted to publicly recognize that. All right, uh, student board representatives, Tatiana.
For kindness day, last month, high school students worked with elementary school students on a craft and activity. Two paper tree murals outlining kindness are now on display in both the elementary and high school. Evening of the Arts was last month. I saw many of you there as drama club, jazz band, chamber singers, juggling club, and individual students performed while student art was on display. There was a great turnout. Last Friday was the snow coming dance. High school students got all dressed up for a fun evening in the high school cafeteria. Fashion club even ran a photo booth. Auditions for the Drama Club's spring production of an evening of comedy, a series of hilarious one-act plays and improvisation are currently underway. The National Honor Society induction of the current junior class will be this Thursday, March ninth at six P M. This Saturday, March eleventh, is the Music in Our Schools concert. High school concert band, jazz band, chamber singers, travel choir, and concert choir have been preparing the last two months for the event. Many high school music students are also volunteering during intermediate and middle school performances to facilitate the concert. The high school is hosting S A T testing on March twenty-second. And lastly, the B H Clothing Circle collected a hundred and eleven bags, our most recent collection. And we're vigorously sorting through all the clothing before Saturday, March twenty-fifth, our next distribution date. We hope to have a huge turnout as we have a lot of clothing.
Thank you. Uh, Megan?
In high school athletics, winter sports have officially concluded with each team reaching some extent of playoffs. Girls' basketball made both county and district playoff tournaments, but lost the first rounds of both. Boys' basketball also made the district playoff tournament, but they also lost in the first round. Boys' wrestling, which we just talked about, Josh Sterner claimed his one-hundredth win during the sectional tournament a few weeks ago. And Jacob Deisher placed seventh in the regional tournament this past weekend and ended his high school career with a hundred and seventeen wins. In girls' wrestling, they competed at the regional championships yesterday with three podium winners. Ashley Nate taking eighth place, Jaden Roush taking fifth place, and Emma Lukinich taking fourth place. Both Jaden and Emma have qualified for the statewide tournament this coming weekend. And as of today, officially, spring sports are now underway.
Lauren?
The elementary school students celebrated Reed Across America Week and Dr. Seuss's birthday last week. On Friday, March third, the intervention teachers planned fun activities for all students by grade level. The pre-k students listened to Green Eggs and Ham and made fizzing green eggs. Kindergarten listened to The Cat in the Hat and made The Cat in the Hat slime. First grade listened to the Lorax and worked together to build the tallest tree using straws, cotton balls, pom-poms, tape, and feathers. Second grade listened to Bartholomew and the Oublak and made Oublak. And third grade listened to, listened to, oh, say, can you say, what's the weather today and made tornadoes in a bottle. The elementary school has also partnered with our P T C to host a fun night of bingo last Thursday. There was a great turnout with about three hundred people joining. They raffled off TV, uh, TV gift baskets and gave free books to all students who attended. It was a fun night and a wonderful fundraiser for our P T C. Finally, there are currently forty-six students registered for kindergarten next school year. Screening sessions are be, being scheduled for June. So if you know anyone that has a child that will be five years old on or before September first, please have them check out the, our website or call the elementary school office.
Thank you. Jenna?
In the intermediate school, March is going to be an exciting month. Fourth grade classes received their fertilized eggs today. For the next twenty-one days, the students will be learning about embryology taught by four H on a weekly basis. The chicks will then be sent to a farm on the thirty-first. Dr. Fabian will be coming to fourth grade classrooms to teach about the dangers of tobacco products in her Tar Wars presentation. March tenth through the seventeenth is the book fair. March twenty-fourth is the Music in the Schools Assembly for grades three through five. March twenty-eighth is the Laser Show Assembly. In the middle school, March sixth through the twen, through the thirtieth, there is a Pulse Servants project going on that involves donating loose change to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. From March ninth through the twenty-third, there will be a Joe Corby Pizza fundraiser. On March twenty-fourth, there is a spring dance. In both schools, there will be a Pie Day Assembly on March fourteenth. The I S and M S students will participate in an assembly celebrating mathematics. The students will participate in games and contests centered around the mathic, mathematical constant pi. Marking period three ends on March twentieth. Parents will be able to view the child's report card on March thirtieth. Music in our schools is this Saturday on March eleventh. Students from, from grades three through twelve will participate at the high school from three to seven o'clock. And finally, the Spirit Week from Monday, March thirteenth to Friday, March seventeenth. On Monday, wear colors for cause, Tuesday, Pie Day. Wednesday, dress as your favorite holiday, Thursday, Rainbow Day, and Friday, Green Day.
Thank you very much, guys. Moving on. Any, uh, public comment in regards to the agenda? Hearing none. Uh, I'll move on to Board of Directors report. Can I get a motion in a second? Thank you. So just a couple items under, uh, Board of Directors report this evening. Uh, the first one is the meeting minutes from last school board meeting on February sixth. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to those minutes before they're approved? Okay, uh, we have a few, uh, first reading policies. Uh, there's four of them I'd like to go over with, uh, the board this evening, just so you have a high level overview of what's included. Uh, the first one is student debt. That actually is a brand new policy. Uh, we didn't have, we did not have a policy of how to handle student debt before. Uh, so I just want to go through the, essentially the process that's in the, uh, the policy. The first level or the threshold is ten dollars. Once that student debt, uh, reaches that ten dollar threshold, uh, the first step would be a written notice would be sent home to families. Uh, the second step would be that there would be, uh, after those two weeks, uh, the building principal would then meet with the parents or reach out to the parents to, uh, engage in some conversations about how to support that, uh, family in making up that student debt. Uh, the third step then, if that is not successful after an additional two weeks, uh, then we would start to look at some more restrictive measures of, uh, uh, pulling back, uh, student access to extracurricular events, field trips, and those sort of things. Uh, but again, that, that is kind of a last step resort in terms of, uh, trying to work with the family, sending the letters of notification, conferences with the principal, phone calls, those sort of things. But, uh, we wanted to make sure that this was, uh, brought to the board's attention as a new policy. Um, we are experiencing, uh, some growing student debt, uh, particularly as it pertains to our lunch accounts. And so we wanted to, uh, make sure we had a policy and a process in place to, uh, recognize that. The other policies in front of you, nine oh one, public relation objectives. Just a minor language adjustment for, uh, email usage. Uh, nine oh two, publications of programs, there's no updates there. Uh, that's just a refresh of, of a policy. And nine oh four, public attendance at school, uh, there's some minor language there to, uh, include vaping with tobacco products. Uh, and also to add a health and state, safety statement, which was, uh, recommended by P S B A. Any questions on those policies before I move on? Okay, um, second reading policies, oh, I'm sorry.
Really bad and I know a lot of people have heard it. I know no one chooses to be in debt and maybe I'm understanding this wrong. But if, if the family's in debt and I know they're embarrassed to admit it, is it right for us to start punishing them? Like, come them up in school and?
So part of this process is if the family is in debt, uh, again, written notification and then conferences with the, uh, principal, uh, which is that personal connection. And that's where we can start to work with them, uh, free reduced lunch application, uh, those sort of things. So that way, if they're not already qualified, we can help get them qualified in order to make that, that process better. If we don't do something and we don't put something in place, um, unfortunately, that, that debt grows to a point where, um, it becomes almost unmanageable for them to be able to, to recover from it. And so we have to put some kind of process in place in order to be able to, um, handle that debt. Uh, particularly with the food service account, because that's its own separate account. Uh, everything else that the district covers all falls under the general budget. Food service, it's its own separate budget and there cannot be any debt associated with that. It has to be clean. And so that's why particularly this policy and student debt usually comes from food service, it's super important to be able to work with families to be able to clean that, clean that debt up. So. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, okay.
Um, second reading policies, uh, with those represented last board meeting, uh, we didn't receive any additional feedback. So those will be approved, uh, and become official board policies after this evening. Uh, and then there's two other items. Uh, this seems to be kind of an antiquated item, but still is, uh, required. We have the, uh, Health and Safety Plan. Uh, this is required because under the, uh, A R P S R grant, every six months, we have to update and have a health and safety plan on file for the school district. Uh, that grant expires September twenty-four. So you'll see this one more time next September and then one more time next January, wintertime. Uh, and then that'll be the end of this. But, uh, that Health and Safety Plan really has been, uh, focused more on just regular illnesses uh, and some of those prevented, preventative ma, uh, measures. Uh, particularly right now, we're seeing a lot of illnesses, colds, head colds, uh, and the stomach bug was going around for a while. So the plan has been more curtailed to just illnesses that we see now more, more on a routine basis. Um, and then finally, we have the acknowledgement of, uh, an agreement with the Lutheran Home. This has been a longstanding agreement, so if there would ever be an emergency at the Lutheran Home, uh, they can bring their residents down to the school district, uh, and vice versa. If there is ever a, an emergency here within the school district, uh, whatever building, we can go and utilize the space at the, uh, Lutheran Home, whether as a temporary housing, uh, until we can get families re, reunified or that reunification process right away. So that, that's, uh, essentially what that agreement is talking about. Any questions on those, uh, five items? Mr. Wagon, we'll turn it back over to you for committee reports. All right, committee reports, uh, Mrs. Hune, B C I U.
Good evening, everybody. Um, the only thing I really wanted to draw folks' attention, and it doesn't begin to compare to, um, tornadoes in a bottle. I really want to know how to make tornadoes in a bottle, as they said, or Spirit Day or whatever. But, um, thi, this has to do with mandates. So we spent some time at the B C I U board meeting on February sixteenth, um, reviewing a document. And I'll pass this around because it, it's, um, impressive in like a, almost in unfortunate way. It's unfortunate that, um, we as public schools have to deal with this amount of mandates. So what the B C I U did a couple of years ago at the request or direction of the superintendents around the county was, um, go through all of that, um, legal stuff and try and document it and organize it in a way that helps school districts ensure that they're in compliance and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. And in addition to that, um, this will be used and has been used, will continue to be used as, um, a, a way to help our leg- a, a way to help our legislators understand just how much mandates impact us as school districts. So um, this is this year's version. These are um, the changes that have been made. So this is like another ten pages worth of mandate updates just in the past year. So it obviously is a dynamic document, it's constantly being updated, but I'll pass it around just to give you a sense. It's organized in a way, again, that helps folks um, really understand by category, by deadline, by scope, who's involved and who has to do what when. Um, so pretty powerful stuff. There's also a um, a checklist document, which basically takes that eighty two pages worth of stuff and whittles it down into like um, much more succinct checklist-driven type document um, that makes it easier uh, from an action perspective. So um, again, I'll pass these around and just if, at the end of the night, if they make their way back, that would be great. Um, other than that, there was kind of um, standard business. There's a couple um, important dates that I reflected in the written report that I submitted on the advocacy days um, are coming up in um, April, April seventeen. There's a, a basically a forty five minute issues briefing um, that anybody can dial into through Zoom if you're interested in understanding what the next day on the eighteenth, um, folks involved in this advocacy day are going to be prioritizing in their conversations with pre-scheduled meetings with legislators in, in the Capitol in Harrisburg. And then just a plug for the Annie Sullivan Award. Every year, the B C I U sponsors an award to recognize um, an outstanding special ed teacher or um, staff member involved in the world of special education. And um, it's a powerful ceremony. Um, typically ten or twelve people are nominated and um, you know, stories are told about them, their nominations are reviewed, similar to our New Heights Award. Folks stand up and talk about why they chose to nominate these individuals, and then the winner is announced. Um, so it's um, a pretty powerful evening. Again, only one hour, so if anybody's interested in attending, I can get you that information.
We did nominate a staff member. We'll see if they win, but we did nominate a staff member, which is pretty exciting.
Excellent. All the more reason for Brandywine to come out and support um, our, our school and that individual, so, yeah.
And just a quick tag on to appreciate the recognizing the state mandates. Um, this has been a uh, priority for me personally. Uh, I've really kind of led the charge in state mandates, um. We also as a COLA committee, the coun- uh, council committee of legislative action at the B C I U level, have this as one of our priority areas. Uh, I was asked to be on a state committee, uh, it's a joint state government commission, um, and it focuses particularly on the training mandates that are engaged in that. Um, and so uh, we've been involved in that, uh, created some recommendations back to the committee. Uh, and those recommendations were uh, um, agreed upon and will move forward now to a final uh, draft, which will then go over to the legislators. And so some positive work there. I don't know if it'll ever get any traction, but at least it is a uh, common sense, uh, action, actionable item, recommendations and just some the- uh, theoretical language that's in there. Uh, this is actual um, the action that the state could make if they wanted to, to help uh, refine and make mandates a little bit more manageable. Um, just as a quick talking point for mandates, um, so there was one that was just put in place last July. Uh, it's called Act Fifty Five, it's on safety and security, and, and that's part of the problem. So all these mandates are good ideas. And unfortunately, it's one good idea, something happens, and now they add, add another good idea. And so it develops this layering effect. Uh, but the last one, Act Fifty Five, is all about safety and security. Um, and so this one focuses on three hours of training every year that are now mandated. So if you start picking that apart, doesn't sound like it's a lot, but when you add it to all the other training, uh, you have to find the time for that. And so I did the calculations on that, based off of the number of students in Pennsylvania. Um, if you would carve out a half day in service to do that three hours of training, there'd be five point two million hours of instructional time lost just to accomplish that one mandate. And so it just starts to put some numbers to the impact of, I don't think people quite, the legislators quite realize the impact to what a mandate really involves when they, when they put these in place. And again, it's not just this one. It's the eighty two pages worth of mandates that are out there that we have to continually grow upon, so. Um, I'm hopeful that the recommendations that we're working on here, which is more tying it to a five-year cyclic plan, uh, teachers need to do something called Act Forty Eight, and that, they have to get a certain number of uh, continual education hours to be able to maintain their certification. And so the proposal really wraps around, instead of having these annual requirements or every three years or every five years, have them all be part of the cyclic process. Uh, so that every five years, they have to check all these boxes as part of their certificate, renewal of certification, so. We'll see what happens, but again, it's, it's an actionable item that maybe we'll get some, get some feet and move forward, so. Thanks for letting me jump on my soapbox.
Sure.
That's great. Yeah, and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hune. Mr. Sheets, B C T C.
Um, if I can point my colleagues' attentions to the business and operation report item L. It is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Berks Career Technology Center operating budget. Um, realistically, like the first two, uh, correction, it's just like three and four are really where you guys are going with. Uh, what that breaks down, it breaks down what our proportional share is at B C T C, basically to figure out three-year rolling average of our students. They use that to decide how much money we have to pay, what our share is uh, to B C T C. This year, our share uh, is four, sorry, uh, four point two one five. Um, our budget is five hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. That is down about five point six percent from five hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, sounds fantastic until you realize that we have to shift the transportation burden over to our operating budget. Um, don't want to look a gift horse in the ha- in the mouth, but realistically, that's, that's what it is, right? That's why we're showing a uh, a, a lower cost. Now, with all that being said, um, you know, it, it is a great program at B C T C, right? So um, you definitely get what you pay for. Uh, B C T C is a world-class, uh, you know, training institute. Um, they make sure that our kids get the, you know, basically the most cutting-edge training for all of the different uh, you know, programs that they have over there. Um, I would hope that everyone uh, sees the value in this. Uh, also appreciates the discount, not discount, were the decrease that we're getting this year. And I can count on all of your support for supporting this budget. Um, our next meeting will be held on three twenty-two at the east campus. I think I might have messed that up. The three twenty-two, the last one was two twenty-two at the west campus. The next one's three twenty-two at the east campus. This concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Gherko, D E I T C.
So I have nothing to report. The next meeting is March thirtieth.
Thank you. Uh, COLA, Mrs. Walizer is here, is not here.
I can just share a few uh, words on COLA, uh, sitting as the co-chair for that organization. Um, so last meeting, we had uh, Noel Ellerson, who is from Washington, D C, representing A A S A. Uh, and she spoke on the uh, federal mandates or the federal updates um, as it pertains to education. So talked about some of the education bills, talked about some of the education funding, uh, but then really focused a lot of our conversation on um, understanding the impact of omnibus bills and how um, all different um, bills have to be considered and taken into consideration and as a part, as a package of things that might end up impacting education and their close thumb on all those different uh, facets of the legislative world down in Washington, D C. So uh, very informative, very uh, interesting. I did share with the board the, that PowerPoint that uh, was done at that presentation. If you have any other questions, uh, yeah, please let me know.
Thank you. Uh, policy committee.
Uh, I think we went over the policies already.
Strategic planning and goals, Mrs. Eisenhardt. Thank you. Negotiations, compensation committee, Mr. Sheets. I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you. Building committee.
Uh, there's a building and construction committee meeting uh, scheduled for tomorrow to uh, continue uh, further refining the uh, scope of the uh, stadium project. Uh, we're hopeful to be able to receive some uh, preliminary budget numbers back from uh, Keystone Sports tomorrow, which will help define a uh, pathway and some recommendations out to the board, hopefully in the near future here.
Thank you. Any additional uh, board discussions, questions, concerns? Yes, sir.
Okay, I was just wondering, Mr. Podiger, it would be possible at all to get Mrs. Hune's report on all those things on our web so that the people can actually see all the mandates that we're faced with and what it means to the budget and the taxes of this community?
Absolutely. In fact, I, one of the things I wanted to mention was um, I also wrote an article for the Reading Eagle, which will be published in the next two or three weeks, uh, focused all on state mandates. Uh, so we'll tie that all together and, and put that on our website. Absolutely. Great, great suggestion.
Any other concerns, questions? Hearing none. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Eisenhardt? Yes. Mr. Hoffner?
Yes.
Mr. Hornechill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Rightnow?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Eight A's motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, business and operations, a motion and a second. Thank you.
Mr. Wagman, before you pass it over to Mr. Gherko, um, Mr. Hefner, um, if you're interested in a hard copy just to have in your possession, um, those are also available from the B C I U. So just give me a heads up and I can give anybody who's interested in having either the checklist or that whole eighty-two pages. Um, I mean, Alexis is just going through and, and you realize eighty-two pages with probably five or six mandates per page. I mean, it, it is just overwhelming, but it's a great tool. Sure, okay. Yeah, um, while we're doing that, anybody else interested in hard copy? All right, two. Okay, three. And I, A- Andrew, you and your team already have them or no?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, great. If you can, yeah, three. That's right. Every time you go to the grocery store and somebody taps you on the shoulder, you go, look at this.
That's fine. Thank you, Mrs. Hune.
Um, so moving over to the business and operations report, uh, to begin, we have the bills list, items A through D. Uh, general fund bills total nine hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Item B, food service fund bills total thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-one cents. Construction fund bills total one hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, during this time period, we had no checks from capital reserve fund. And then moving, moving on to item E, we have financial statements through December and January. Um, as previously mentioned, would happen at the last board meeting. And then there is no budget transfers. So if anybody has any questions with those before we move on. All right, and moving over to special education and pupil services. So item one, we are asking you to ratify an agreement uh, with Doctor Schillerbeer for a special education student at a one-time cost of four thousand, five hundred dollars. And item two is to approve an addendum with an existing waiver agreement for student four, one, one, zero, six uh, for the remainder of this school year and next school year as attached. And we have nothing for curriculum and technology. Moving over to facilities and maintenance, we're asking you to approve the agreements with A J Morrow Company for the following security card access upgrades. Now, these are currently budgeted in the capital reserve long-term planning uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three. And also, just as a side note, these are items that have to take place before we can do the Act Fifty Five grant security upgrades. Um, so just a piece of information. So item I, this is to approve an electricity purchasing agreement as a participant in the Berks County electricity purchasing group with Provident Energy for the next two years, beginning July twelfth and moving through July thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, this will be with Constellation New Energy of Houston, Texas. We currently have an agreement with them at about point zero three, two, two, four. Um, while this is a significant increase to our electric budget of about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, I would say we could, given the current market conditions and initial predictions, this is actually not all that bad. Um, and item J is to approve the updated roster for Brandywine Transportation as attached. And then item K, this is something we've done the last couple of years, but it's to approve the facilities use and hold harmless agreement with Quitztown University, uh, so that they can host our graduation on May thirty-first. And then item L, Mr. Sheets previously noted, this, we're asking you to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four B C T C operating budget of a total of eighteen million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand and fifty-six dollars. And our total decrease is, or the total member decrease is seven point six percent. Uh, as Mr. Sheets previously mentioned, our decrease is five point six percent for a total of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. So moving on to item M, this is to approve all American athletics or provide a complete resurfacing of the high school gym floor and application of two coats of the N S B C alert, game wise logos, et cetera, um, at a cost of approximately twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, you can see the mock-up that is attached in the agreement as well. Uh, so initially, we had budgeted to have the, the floor sanded. Um, so this is going to essentially do a little bit more um, that we would have had to do, but we had a great price. Um, so we're going to try to do it this year. And then item N is to approve an agreement with House Wash Glen, out of Glenmore, Pennsylvania to conduct a surface cleaning of the high school tennis courts at a cost of six thousand dollars. And that's all. If anybody has any questions.
Question about the B C T C transportation. So do, do I understand that it's about a thirty-three thousand dollar um, discount or cost savings of our, what we have to pay B C T C? How does that compare with what we're estimating or forecasting? The incremental expense to um, absorb that transportation and do it ourselves is?
Correct. So we're actually working on kind of sharing the transportation with Quitztown. Um, so at this point, it's probably going to be about double, the sa- the decrease of thirty-three thousand, it's going to be more like seventy thousand. Um, so that's the current cost of what we're projecting. So it's going to cost us more to bring it back.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're, we're gonna save thirty-three thousand on what we pay to B C T C, but it's going to cost us closer to seventy. So the net gap that we have to make up is forty-some on thousand dollars.
Correct.
Wow, okay. And that'll be built into this forthcoming year's budget.
Yep.
Maybe there's a budget workshop question, so when we talk about that, I guess it's later this evening perhaps. Um, will that be pulled out at, on your like, um, summary sheet as this is an incremental expense this year that we've never had to deal with before?
Uh, yeah, it, it does know transportation. I just had a lump sum, but I can break it out for future.
I think it might be helpful as we go through the process to be able to identify that's like forty grand incremental. And here's what it's attributed to.
Yeah, so I haven't made the actual, I guess, switch over until I had the final cost from Quitztown.
Okay.
Um, but it's kind of like earmarked.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none? Could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Hoffner?
Yes.
Mr. Hornechill?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rightnow?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Can I get a motion in a second? Woo. Yeah, he goes. Thank you.
Under uh, superintendent report this evening, we have a dual enrollment agreement with Albright College. Uh, this has been a partnership we formed about Mr. Volker about two, three years ago. Uh, been a good opportunity, a lot of STEM initiatives that are connected to this dual enrollment agreement. Um, this one took a little bit uh, of time to get this one officially pulled together for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three for this school year. Uh, at the same time, we thought, let's just get twenty-three and twenty-four done, because it took us so long to get twenty-two and twenty-three. So uh, we're asking for approval for item A and B, exact same agreement, just one for this year, one for next year. Uh, and then we have items C, D, uh, and E, our second readings of curriculum that uh, Mr. Farina had presented uh, last meeting. Uh, item F is a high school field trip request for nine business students and three uh, teacher chaperones to go to the annual F B L A state, state leadership conference. to go to the annual FBLA state, state leadership conference. Uh, and that is April sixteenth to April nineteenth. Since this is an overnight field trip, uh, the board, uh, is asked to, uh, approve those overnight field trips. Uh, and then there is another overnight field trip. This one just came to us. Uh, it is for our high school treble choir. Uh, they've been invited to go to Pittsburgh uh, and to participate in the Pittsburgh, uh, treble choir ensemble. Uh, they have a concert on Sunday. And then the choir has invited them to participate in one of their rehearsals the following day on Monday. So a great opportunity for our students, approximately eighteen students that are gonna be going on this. Uh, and that would be April first to third. That actually is during our spring break, so there'd be no intersection with school during that time. Any questions on those activities, on those events? Turn it back over to you.
All right.
Could I, uh, get a roll call, please?
Mr. Hornechill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightnow?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Asper?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. All right, we need to take a, uh, brief break, uh, for exec session. Can I get a motion to enter into this? What's that? For personnel reasons. No, sorry. We'll have a motion in a second. It's fine. It's official now.
Uh, we're just gonna get right in there for, what is, sorry, bear with us one second here. We'll be right back. Thank you. Uh, learning support teacher, uh, that you will see reflected in C three A, which I'll talk about in a second. Uh, but that is, uh, the hiring of Miss Angela Kemp, who will be the replacement for Mr. Truleaner. Uh, we also are, uh, excited, I think, to celebrate. I'm not sure this is a celebration for the district, but a wonderful celebration for Mrs. Levingood that she has officially, uh, submitted her le, uh, retirement letter. And so after, uh, I think it's thirty-five years of commitment to the school district, she's gonna be retiring as the elementary secretary. Um, so we are advertising for that one currently, uh, and we'll be, uh, looking for, uh, a replacement for that. So there's some transition time in all her, uh, knowledge that she's had over those years. We also have the resignation of Mrs. Solenberger, who's our middle school and high school Spanish teacher. Uh, we currently have that advertised. Uh, we're looking for a replacement for that. The reason why it's a TBA is because that's really dependent on finding a, a, uh, replacement for that position. Uh, we are, have some backup contingency plans in place if we can find, uh, a certified Spanish teacher towards the end of the school year, but we are hopeful to be able to find someone there. Uh, and then finally, we had the resignations of the, uh, spring season co-curricular athletic, athletic coaches, individuals that coached us before previously, uh, that will not be moving forward this year. Uh, change of status, we don't have any of this for this meeting. Uh, we do have a few appointments. Uh, again, I mentioned, uh, Miss Angela Kemp. Uh, Mrs. Kemp is, uh, going to be joining us from the Allentown School District with, I believe it's fifteen years, sixteen years, fifteen or sixteen years of, uh, special ed, education experience in that school district. Uh, and so we're really excited to have her join our staff, uh, and in that specifically, that K to three autistic support position. Uh, we have, uh, co-curricular appointments for the twenty-two, twenty-three athletic coaches, uh, as well as athletic event staff. Um, just a plug to the community, anyone that might be watching, we are still looking for a, uh, head track coach. So if someone is interested, we would love for you to be able to check with our athletic director, uh, Mrs. Sarah Conrad. Uh, we also finally have two appointments and we're excited to have these folks join our staff. This is Mrs. Heidi Hofstetter, who's going to be joining as the clerical, uh, clerical substitute. Uh, and we also have Miss Jessica Swanger, who is going to be joining us with us as the cafeteria recess, uh, aid substitute, as well as a food service substitute. So again, excited to have those individuals join us and be able to support our team and our students. Uh, that is the end of the personnel report, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there any, uh, public comment? Any additional comments on the board? Yes, sir.
That email that was, uh, sent out for a public comment about, uh, getting rid of homework, could you tell us more about that?
Yes, so, um, that is part of our, uh, strategic plan for the school district this year. Uh, we, as you probably recall, we started, we looked at, uh, our entire process of how we do retesting, uh, how we do, um, a, a bunch of different things to support our students and make sure that learning is a priority. Uh, this is the final phase for that. We've actually been, have been targeting, uh, homework expectations for some years now, but we haven't had a chance to really put that together in a committee work. So, uh, Mr. Volker is leading that charge. Uh, he met with, uh, some of our teaching, teacher representatives, a group of about twenty, thirty staff members, uh, that started looking at the pros and cons of homework and trying to find that balance. Uh, so we have some really good feedback there. We also send a survey out to our teachers to get their feedback and input. Uh, and then likewise, the compliment that we wanted to get input from, uh, parents, uh, all with the idea of we're gonna put that together so that we have, uh, some good commonality and consistency, uh, within buildings, uh, within grade levels really, within buildings and then across the district, uh, K to twelve, so that we have more of a purposeful process and understanding of what is homework, what's the appropriate amount of homework and how do we use that, that homework?
Okay, cuz that was gonna be my next question. What do we consider homework? Are we talking about just handing them papers? Cuz like, I know my daughters, I consider homeworks also studying at home cuz you're doing it at home when you're on time. So is there a guideline there?
Um, yeah.
So when we started our paperwork, we actually started off by defining what homework is. And we, we basically said homework is anything that is assigned that is occurring outside of that classroom. So whether it's reading a book for ten minutes, whether it's a project that you're working on during class that you didn't finish, that now is due the next day or weeks later. Um, so again, it's anything that would fall into that, that category. For parents, we, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the survey was palatable. We didn't wanna provide too much information that deter people from reading it and going into definitions. Whatever your, your definition is of homework, that will be fine. Complete the survey as if, you know, you're, you're thinking about homework through your lens.
Okay. Cuz I'm, I'm thinking like, what happens if you have like the stomach bug for three days and you missed a bunch of work? Are teachers gonna be recommended to give you the appropriate time in class to do that work then? Or are we not gonna go into details yet?
We're starting to blur lines between homework assignments and projects. And then also what happens when you're sick or absent from class. So really, the whole purpose of the work that we're doing right now is to ensure we have that consistency across the school district, across grade levels and departments, as Mr. Podig was articulating. Um, really from an instructional, uh, point of view. So do we believe that every kindergartner should be doing thirty minutes of reading by themselves every single day? No, or yes. You know, so trying to just establish what is that expectation for a kindergartner? For a fifth grader, for a twelfth grader, is that all the same? Or is it different? And then within each grade level, do we have the exact same expectations for every single student? Or does that get differentiated based on the student's needs? So there's a lot that we're working through and we're just trying to establish some general guidelines. So there's a level of consistency a, across the district. And also, uh, internally, we're establishing really what some of those best practices are regarding homework.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Volker.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Volker, just before you change topics, if you don't mind, can I ask a quick follow-up question? So remind us if you would kindly, um, the, the, um, nature of the committee. So it's faculty members, administrators, keep going.
Sure, absolutely. So I would say it's our instructional team. So yes, every- So I would say it's our instructional team, so yes, everybody that's an administrator that intersects with instruction, which is most of our um, admin team. Uh, obviously that's building, uh, principals, assistant principals, uh, director of pupil services, instructional supervisor, cricket supervisor, myself, Mr. Potager, um, I'm forgetting it, it, Mrs. Honig, and so everybody that intersects there on the administrative side, as well as it's primarily um, uh, department heads with representatives of every grade level and every um, department, if you will, so we also have um, elective teachers that are in there, specialists. Uh, so on the art side of the house, what do we view as, you know, homework through that encore lens uh, versus your elementary grades, uh, middle through, I don't want to call individuals out. Uh, but yes, there is a great cross-section across the entire district.
Thank you.
Um, other question, I know we have a policy already, there are retake tests, we're already working on the homework situation. Could we expand that policy, the retake quizzes?
Take that as well, absolutely. So um, what we established this year was um, a way to take a look at our grade, I feel like there's a stand-up. A way to take a look at our grade books. So we have our grade books and we wanted to establish some level of consistency with how we are entering grades, what do grades mean, all of that. Uh, and we ended up establishing a weighted grade book system. And we said formative assessments um, are really used to like, guide your instruction along the way. So that's your homework assignments, uh, that's your smaller quizzes, smaller point assignments that that teacher can use, like, okay, they're getting it or they're not. The bigger summative assessment pieces that go in the gradebook, usually think about your chapter test, those end of unit or end of selection assessments, which sometimes can be quizzes, depending upon how that individual class is structured. So for guidance in year one, we said smaller quizzes, they're more of your formative pieces. Our big summative chapter unit tests, that's what we want to focus on this year as we want to make sure that students have an opportunity to retake those big tests and those big assessments. Because when you take a look at a gradebook, that's really what those big things are that dictate your grade. And if there's a student that just had a really bad day, well, we want that student to be able to show that they have mastered that content at a higher level than they perform, okay? That was the crux behind year one. Our goal is as this year progresses, as we're getting closer to, we want to reflect on how did that work? Did it work very well? Do we have consistency of implementation across the district, across the grades, across the departments? Or were there areas that we needed to tweak and improve? So those are conversations we'll be primarily having during the fourth quarter. But as it stands right now in year one, smaller quizzes, we've said they're formative assessments. Um, so those are not retakeable. Also, we have to consider um, manageable workloads for our teachers, uh, because that's part of the equation as well. We can't overburden our, our teachers with the philosophical approach that we have of the content mastery. So it's really about walking that line, finding the balance and doing what's best for kids. So as it stands in year one, that's where we are, but that is a practice that we are reflecting upon.
Thank you, Mr. Volker.
Yeah, of course.
Would you have a number, I'm changing subjects totally, back to uh, the lunch account. Would you have a number on top of your head, how many are in debt more than ten dollars? Like, is it really?
I don't have a number on my, top of my head of how many over ten dollars, I do know that the total number is three thousand eight hundred dollars in, in total debt right now. And those range from some accounts that are over two hundred, pushing three down to two, two dollars.
Um, final question, I don't even know if this is a possibility. I know ninety percent of our district, the taxes are on the homeowners cuz we really don't have much business in our school district. Is it possible to even offer businesses like uh, free school tax for X amount of years just to entice them to come here, or is that like nine minute possibility?
That is a possibility, Mr. Pratt, I will turn it over to you, sir. This is like a law school all over again.
Yeah, there are ways of doing that, but that would be something that you'd have to enter into. I mean, they're, they're more than just school district taxes you have to worry about, if you're gonna start forgiving, there's county taxes, township, all those that you'd have to work through. Um, used to be called Keystone Opportunity Zones that you'd put together, but um, there are ways of doing that, but you'd have to work with your other local uh, entities to address those.
Would we be even interested in that? I, I'm just trying to think of ideas cuz we do have a bad tax situation.
So.
Well, I think you would have to have the availability of properties.
I, I was just gonna say, you need to have land available to be able to, to, to develop it, entice people to come in and develop it. I don't know if you have the land available to do it, to be, to make it worth the while. Uh, and then you'd also have to look at um, um, in lieu of scenarios, what would you accept, what would you not accept? So it would be a, a, a big project that you'd have to work on to, to establish those. A lot of the communities that I have that work on those types of things, they have either large areas in a, in a, in their downtown area and or they have just, you know, development area where they bring in developments to bring in those warehouses or the distribution centers and things of that nature to help entice them to come in this area. But then you're also looking at the infrastructure, you're looking at uh, those types of areas where you have to be prepared to address as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I would like to ask Nicole, uh, I know at the last budget, we talked about uh, spending around twenty-five hundred dollars to GPS the buses, I know we were working on it, did we ever finish that?
So it is. So the GPSs are installed.
Okay. Is there actually like an app on the phone now and everything?
So the GPSs is for the, for any line transportation to see where the buses are, there's currently not capability for the parents to see it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, um, I do have the, so there is sixty-three students that have a balance greater than ten dollars. And that actually makes up thirty-five hundred dollars of the thirty-eight hundred, there's sixty-three students.
And we reached out to all those students?
Yes, they get it, they get an update every Monday, a notification goes out and they also get a letter in the mail once a month.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, can I get, uh, do need to announce that we had an executive session, even though we do have a motion in a second for that executive session. Uh, can I get a motion in a second uh, to adjourn, please? Thank you, we will now go into the budget portion of the meeting. So uh, we will transition, um, we can pretty much stay seated at this point, the official board meeting is over. Uh, we'll transition into the budget meeting, which is the makeup from last Monday, um, Mr. Aguero will be sending that.